Welcome to the 2019 Candidates Forum sponsored by the Wallingford Community Women. I'm Jean McFarland, the program moderator. This segment features five of the 12 candidates running for Board of Education. The first part of the program will consist of questions asked of the candidates by members of the local media, including the New Haven Register and the Record Journal, and students from Lyman Hall High School and Mark T. Sheehan High School. The second part will allow each candidate to make a closing statement. During the question and answer period of the program, each candidate will have two minutes to respond to a question. Each candidate will have two minutes to make closing remarks. Before beginning the questioning, I'd like to introduce five of the candidates running for Board of Education. They are, from your left to right, Kathy Costelli, Democrat; Autumn Allenson, Republican; Bruce Conroy, Democrat; Rajan Deering, Republican; Patty Purcell, Democrat; Michael Votto, Democrat, is unable to attend this evening. I will read a statement submitted by Mr. Votto during the closing remarks segment. Ms. Lauren Takoriz, will you please ask the first question of Mrs. Costelli?
Yes, thank you. Hi Kathy.
Hi Lauren, how are you doing tonight?
Fine, thank you. In your opinion, what is the most pressing need for middle and high school renovation? Is it building conditions, declining enrollment, changing academics, something else?
I think it's a combination. Certainly, the schools are getting older, and it's pay me now or pay me later. We're going to have to do it at some point. However, I think programming is probably paramount in our decision-making, and that was actually the number one or number two response from the 2,300 people that took our survey. They did feel that programming was important. We are limited in space right now for doing certain programs such as robotics, things like that, that we cannot accommodate very well, and it would be great to be able to accommodate those things going forward.
Noah Speeg, will you please ask the next question of Autumn Allenson?
Alright. Ms. Allenson, which of the three options from the facility study do you support and why?
So, with the facility study, I actually don't have enough information to support any of them at this point. My background is in logistics operations, and a lot of what I do is in managing facilities, warehouses. I have a 2 million square foot warehouse in Illinois that I have overseen for several years. I don't think that we have enough information around energy studies, efficiencies, that could be drawn from renovating the schools as new or creating new schools. And we also don't have enough information as to whether or not the student population will actually increase. We have projected numbers, but not a really solid platform to build off of. So, for that reason, I think that I would need a lot more information, and I really think that as a town, to make a very smart decision, we would need that as well.
Thank you.
Leah Shafi, will you please ask the next question of Bruce Conroy?
Hello, Mr. Conroy.
Hey.
So, I'm going to change the topic a little bit, away from the school merger or proposed changes to the structure of that. But otherwise, nationally, the vaping crisis has been focused on very heavily in the recent months, and it's even a problem in our local community. So, what do you think would be a potential solution to the vaping crisis that is occurring in our middle and high schools?
Can you just say that again?
Yeah. What do you think would be a potential solution to the vaping crisis occurring in our high schools and middle schools?
Vaping.
Oh, vaping. Oh, ban it.
It's hard to hear.
Sorry.
Ban it. Really, so I don't think children should be smoking at all. I smoked for a very long time, it's very bad for you. And I stopped maybe eight years ago. I do not think nicotine is good for children, it is bad for their developing brains, and we should ban it. I mean aggressively ban it. And we should do it with the other states that are doing it. We should work with the states around us, because you cannot ban something in one spot and then make it so they can just wander over the border and grab it somewhere else. This needs to be a New England and regional-wide, northeast regional-wide coalition to do it. It is not good for our children. Smoking is not good for our children, drinking isn't. We need to do this by example. We all need to be part of the solution, so it needs to be stopped.
Luther Turmel, would you please ask the next question of Rajan Deering?
Rajan, if you were Wallingford's education czar and could make any three changes to the district, what would those changes be and why?
Thank you for the question, Luther. I am not a single-issue candidate. I do not have one single issue that I want to focus on at the expense of other issues. Although, I would say that I want to see us to continue to work on our curriculum, to be able to tailor to students' needs individually, as every student's desires where they want to be after high school is different, and every student's learning styles are different. I want to focus on preparing all students for success after high school, both in terms of college and career, as well as personal and financial. And I would want to focus on students' physical and mental health and wellbeing.
Lauren, would you please ask the next question of Patty Purcell?
Hi Patty.
Hi Lauren.
What should the Board of Ed's budget priorities be going into 2020, 2021?
Well, first off, I always think the priority should be the children, and that keeping the classes sized down, so definitely there. Anything that impacts them directly would be probably my number-one priority. Then, going down from there, certainly things that would be, that we're looking at even with the whole building project kind of thing, like safety issues. We spent a lot of money recently on safety with software, with doors, with having the police in the building. So, definitely first, you know, the teachers, the peers, the curriculum, the things that they see every day, and then the safety, I think, would be the next.
Thank you.
Noah, would you please ask the next question of Kathy Costelli?
Alright. Ms. Costelli?
Hi Noah.
Hi.
That sounds ominous. Alright, you're comparing me already, huh? Okay.
What new initiative or policy would you like the Board of Education to address, and what would be your suggested course of action?
A policy I want them to address? Well gee, there is actually a new one that I think is really right up there. We just received notice from the state of Connecticut that we need to have a policy around sunscreen and the application thereof for our children. Believe it or not, I'm not lying, we have to now have parental permission to apply, for you guys to be able to apply sunscreen during the school day. So, we're going to be, I guess we have to implement that one. So, right now, that's my favorite one.
Thank you.
Leah, would you please ask the next question of Autumn Allenson?
Hi Autumn.
Hi Leah.
How big of a role do you believe addressing mental health is in preventing school violence? Do you think the resources currently in our schools are sufficient, and if not, what do you think can be done to improve upon this?
I think that the issue of mental health in any regard, whether it's bullying, violence, depression, suicide, is an extremely important topic. Sorry. So, I didn't have the benefit, I guess, of going to school with the electronics and the social media and all of that that we have today. I had the benefit of going to college with those things, but not texting. So, I would say that because of the availability of people online, so I have my whole classes online, I'm like, why are we doing a reunion? I know all your people on Facebook. But it's, I think that it isolates you, and I think that schools taking measures to bring students back together as social units is a big, should be a big priority. I also think that schools need to create spaces, I know that some of the elementary schools have them, where students can go and take a minute. I think that that's a really great concept that could be rolled out to all of the schools, because I think that that type of awareness, it builds the self-awareness into adulthood, and it helps you know, like, where you are at the moment.
Luther, would you please ask the next question of Bruce Conroy?
Bruce, let's go back. Earlier in this evening, Kathy had made the comment about the renovation of the schools, pay me now or pay me later. And I'm just wondering, I mean, has the district reached a point that any of its schools, I want to say are unreparable, but that it would be cheaper for the town to build new rather than to continue to renovate and renovate and renovate?
I want to tell you, it's a good question, thank you, because this is exactly what I do for a living. And I will tell you that our schools are outdated, and they are, I believe, the majority of them are in need of extensive renovation or replacement. The rest of this country and the world has focused their resources on consolidation. And the best way, that is the best way for you to make sure that you get the biggest bang for your buck, is to consolidate your resources. We should do that exactly. I do believe that we should think about entire redesign of our school system, our facilities. Are some of them beyond repair? Some of them are older than everybody in this room, probably, except for maybe Raj. But yeah, they're not efficient, there are huge windows, this is New England, those schools were designed for California. So yes, we need to replace the majority of them, I believe. Do we need to do it in phases? Absolutely. No one can afford to do it all at once. But I believe that our key thing that needs to happen is the consolidation of our schools where possible.
Lauren, would you please ask, excuse me, the next question of Rajan Deering?
Hi. So, if elected, how would you handle cuts in state educational cost-sharing funding over the years without impacting students?
Thank you for the question, Lauren. That is certainly one of the biggest issues facing the Board, is how to continue to improve education for the students while still being responsible with the money that we have. Ultimately, the job as a school district is to prepare our students for the future. So, I would look to invest as much as we can into the curriculum and instruction that our students are receiving, as well as everything else that directly impacts the students, such as care for their mental health and their preparation for life after high school. I would be more inclined to look at cuts towards things that do not directly impact students, such as facilities maintenance, more than looking at cuts towards things that have direct impact on students, such as class sizes.
Noah, would you please ask the next question of Patty Purcell?
Okay. Should standardized testing be the district's guide in education policy and initiatives?
I'm sorry, you said should standardized testing?
Let me repeat it, alright. Should standardized testing be the district's guide in education policy and initiatives?
It's certainly, standardized testing is certainly going to help us curriculum-wise to decide where to go, but it shouldn't be the only measure of success. There's lots of ways we can measure success, but I'll take a minute to talk about our SAT scores, which I know have been in the news and things like that, and people are like, what are you doing? And I just want to let you know that we are doing and addressing some of those things. For instance, we used to have three years of math required for graduation, we're requiring four years now. We've changed the math that they offer, instead of always doing algebra, geometry, algebra, data analysis happens to be something on the SAT that we weren't really addressing, and now we're adding that to our geometry. So, we're going through that. And we also used to not do phonetics for children when my kids came through school, and we realized we need to do that for our language arts, so we're addressing that issue. We've done professional development for teachers. But, other standards of success? Here's an example. We sent five kids from our invention convention to nationals, one year, seven kids another year, and we, two years in a row, we had the national person who got the patent. That's success, okay? Most districts send one, maybe two, but we sent five and seven. We have, I think, I want to say something like 600 students that took AP. We had 71% of those kids that passed their testing out of three, so they're able to go to college. So, there's other things that we can look at for ways of success, not just testing. It's going to help us guide our curriculum, but it's not the only way that we succeed.
Leah, would you please ask the next question of Kathy Costelli?
So, STEM seems to be a great program for students with the aptitude for those subjects, whereas students who fare better in humanities or other core areas like social sciences are seeing their elective options cut in many of the high school and middle school elective options. So, what do you think can be done to address this disparity in the curriculum in regards to opportunity for these students?
I think we're going to have to ask Dr. Menzo what we're going to do about that. No, but honestly, we have to allow programming to support all of our students. And there are new paths out there that we're starting to follow for these kids. Not every kid's going to go to college. There's a lot of opportunities there. Right here in Wallingford, there's our advanced manufacturing and, what is it? Pre-engineering and advanced manufacturing. We're running that program. We're developing avenues with places like Goodwin College, where your kids will be able to take college credit courses, they'll get their credit, their college credits, while it's still in high school, through Goodwin College, through the partnership that we've generated with Goodwin College. We're trying to develop more partnerships, and that's happening within the town now because of STEM. I think you'll find that we truly do try to support all avenues. Which one in particular, Leah, are you feeling that we're cutting?
Well, I know at my school, at least the history department, has faced major cuts in the past few years that I've been in high school, as many of the elective options have been cut, and for no distinct reason, so.
Okay, well, possibly, one of those reasons is low enrollment. If we don't get enough kids to actually select those courses, over time, they will be cut. So, that's probably what's happening more than we're cutting courses simply because of a budgetary issue. It's more around, it's more around, people actually, the students actually showing an interest in them. That's truly what I've seen in the past, when we'll cut courses, is when there's just not enough interest in them.
Luther, would you please ask the next question of Autumn Allenson?
Autumn, did Dr. Menzo's recent leave of absence this fall reveal a need for Wallingford to develop a deeper administrative bench for the district? And please justify your answer.
Thank you for the question. I attended the meetings that, or the one meeting that I think Dr. Menzo was actually out for, and I didn't feel like there was a lack of guidance. I felt like Amy and the other, Carrie?
Carrie and Danielle, actually.
Oh, Carrie and Danielle did a great job, sorry. I think Amy was there too.
Well, Amy's the PPT.
Yeah. So, she, I thought they did a very good job with, in his absence, and I believe that that is really what the goal of any administrator is, right? You know, you want, you want your next people or your successors to be able to function without you, and I don't feel like they can't function independently.
Lauren, would you please ask the next question of Bruce Conroy?
Hi Bruce. Wallingford has a growing number of Stevens who qualify for free and reduced lunch. How can the school district better serve students of low-income families?
So, coming from a low-income family, where we, where I was, I'm pretty much, we ate, we ate our meal in the middle of the day because the Wallingford school system made sure we had it, and the state did. And I believe that we need to expand it, because it's not the only thing they need. How to better help low-income families is to make sure that those kids have clothes, After-school programs that keep them from getting in trouble, which many of us do or did. And free lunch is a perfect one, but honestly, it, once people find out, you feel a little ashamed. Everybody should have free lunch. There's no reason why lunch can't be given to everyone without paying. There's no reason. I would pay extra, and if somebody, if people don't want to pay extra, shame on them. Our students, our children, are the next generation that are going to make this nation really the best one, and this state even better. And we need to take care of them, we need to not make them feel ashamed because they come from a family with no money. And I know how that feels. So, anything we can do, clothes, books, after-school program, more programs, the schools do pretty good, more needs to be done.
Noah, would you please ask the next question of Rajan Deering?
Mr. Deering, how does mastery-based learning help students like myself be prepared for the college experience?
Thank you for the question, Noah. Being in the high schools for four years from 2014 to 2018, I certainly heard that question being asked a lot, and I am still a student myself. I am in my second year at Quinnipiac University, pursuing a double major in economics and public relations. And I caught the later end of mastery-based learning, as when I was in elementary school and middle school, our district was yet to make a large effort towards this new system. The idea behind mastery-based learning is that for each student, we identify what they are doing well and what they could use some help with, then we help the students one-on-one with areas that they are struggling. And this will be beneficial for you and all your peers and all the students coming after you. As everyone is an individual, everyone is a different learner, with different needs, and responds best to different teaching styles. So, this will tailor all of our education towards each student as an individual, finding what's best for them.
Leah, would you please ask the next question of Patty Purcell?
Hi. So, on a recent school day, over 300 students were locked out of their school accounts for failure to fill out consent forms in regards to technology use. So, this caused a major disruption in the school day for teachers and students alike. And a major complaint out of that day from students, parents, and teachers was regards to communication. So, what do you believe the Board can do to address communication issues and to improve communication between administration and families?
Alright, thank you Leah. Well, first off, communication tends to be the problem with, any kind of problem we come forward, it's communication. I can say I don't know how this was communicated to the families. I know we have emails that can go out, I know we have things on website, we probably have handouts that can go out. I'm not exactly sure why that that failed, but what can we do? Certainly, we have people that, like, Menzo sends out something on Twitter, and we can certainly put something on, again, on the stations and the paper and that type of thing. But I don't know specifically what could have made that particular situation better without more information, I think. But certainly, communication needs to happen at all levels. And I think what you need to do, first off, is go, everybody communicates differently, like, some people communicate better by text, some people better by email, some people watch the news, read the paper, whatever. So, I think what you have to try to find out is what is the best communication tools, and maybe spread it across all of them.
Luther, would you please ask the next question of Kathy Costelli?
Kathy, what does the frequent turnover of administrators in the district tell you about Wallingford as a school district? I mean, you look at the people, the administrators who have left, and obviously, they're like most people, they're ambitious people, they want to advance their careers, but does it say something about the district that needs to be fixed?
No, I think it says that we're a great district. We're a district that actually grows our people, and we help them move on up into the next level. That's what, that's what they want to do. They want to become an assistant principal, so they can then become a principal. Sometimes, we don't have a principalship open, and there's a job open in the next town or a town closer to where this person comes from, they're going to seize that opportunity. We've developed them in order to be able to do that, and if they get the job, kudos to us. And the same goes for, I just lost my train of thought. Ah, darn it.
Teachers?
Pardon me? No, no, I'm just, yeah, just all the different levels, moving on from a principal, I know I was going assistant principal to principal, and then on to assistant superintendent. If we have an opening, great. If we don't, and there's an opening around the corner, we've developed these people to be able to take up that opportunity. Yes, do we lose, are we sad when we lose them? Absolutely. And in some instances, we're not a right, there's not a right fit either. Sometimes, it's not always about just the promotion, sometimes people move on because we're not a right fit. Either they're not a good fit for us, or they're not a good fit, I just said that backwards, didn't I? We're not, you know what I'm saying? We don't, there's not, there's not a good fit, and it could be on either side of the table. So, sometimes, it's just, it's a win-win when people realize they need to move on to something else. But for the most part, I think it's because we're growing people and they're finding opportunities.
Lauren, would you please ask the next question of Autumn Allenson?
Hi Autumn. Where do you stand on setting a firm graduation date, regardless of snow days?
Well, regardless of snow days, so, we, my high school had a firm graduation date, and regardless of snow days, that was, I mean, I think it had more to do with teacher contracts, but I think it's difficult to say, because in, in some years, we'll have a lot of snow, and last year, we had no snow. So, I think that, I think more people actually had problems last year, because then they had to find childcare for the afternoons, or for the daytime that the kids wouldn't be in school, that there would normally be after, or summer programs. So, setting a firm graduation date, I don't think it should go past a certain point, but I also don't think that it should be before a certain point. So, maybe a graduation window could be a solution to both of those situations, but I certainly wouldn't say firm date, you know, June 15th, because not every district is going to have that date, and then your summer programs, you're still going to end up with that disparity as to what's available for your kids to go to while you're at work. And let's face it, we all, you know, pretty much, we all have work, whether we're at home with other children, whether we're going to an office, commuting, traveling, whatever, you know? It's important to make sure that the kids have access to programming and a schedule, just as it is for the teachers to have, you know, have their contracts met and things like that.
Thank you.
Noah, would you please ask the next question of Bruce Conroy?
Alright. So, there's this current problem with sleep deprivation in the community of high school students. Like, 70% of high school students have a problem getting enough sleep, and it's mostly because of the wake-up time being around like 6 o'clock on average. Is there any way, is there like any way we can push that time, like, back?
Gee, I don't think so, no. So, here's my thing. I understand that, you know, my, both my daughters went through the Wallingford school system, and I know high school, and every grade is very hard, a lot more work than there was evidently than when I was, when I was in school. But it really comes down to that we need to make sure that we spend a little bit more time, or perhaps set aside some training for the children on time management. You're going to get up early your whole life, unfortunately, your life starts in school. So, we need to just give them that, that structure that teaches them the time management needed, so you may have to sacrifice free time for sleep time.
Thank you.
Leah, would you please ask the next question of Rajan Deering?
Hi. I know you said earlier, you just recently graduated actually out of the Wallingford Public School System. So, if elected, what do you hope your fresh and firsthand perspective in the system will help contribute to the Board and its policy?
Thank you for the question, Leah. Being a Being currently at Quinnipiac University in my second year and having graduated in 2018, I believe that I am bringing a new and valuable perspective to the board. I know very recently what it was like to be in the schools on a day-to-day basis. As I mentioned in an answer to an earlier question, ultimately, the job of the schools is to provide curriculum and instruction to the students that prepares the students for success after graduation. And I very recently received that curriculum and instruction so I could provide the firsthand experience of what I saw myself and my classmates found was working well in preparing us for success after graduation and what could be improved. I am currently, as I said, at Quinnipiac University, so I am now also seeing the perspective of someone who recently graduated to see what helped me a lot when I was in high school and now reflecting back what I wish could have been done differently.
Luther, would you please ask the last question of the session with Patty Purcell?
Which of the three plans currently before the Board of Education do you favor? And if you, your, if your answer is you don't know that you need more information, what information would guarantee that you'd be able to make a decision sooner rather than later?
Okay, thanks, Luther. I definitely, there's pluses and minuses to, to all the different plans, and I definitely am very interested in what the community has to say about it. I mean, the, for, excuse me, for the one school, there might be savings, um, you know, down the line because it's one school versus two. For the two schools, um, the smaller communities are easier for social and emotional reasons. They're easier. You don't lose children. The children have more opportunities to get involved in student council and drama and sports and clubs and that type of thing. Um, the two schools would have less transportation issues. The one school would have, um, more curriculum offerings. Right now, we have like AP classes with six kids at Sheehan and six kids at Lyman Hall, which is a cost, um, issue. So you might be able to have more opportunities for some of those type of things. So there really is plus and minuses to both of those. Um, I do think the building project really needs to happen, and I know that people have been asking, what are some of the educational benefits to, um, doing this? And I just wanted to share a couple of things with you. For instance, um, we have robotics at the middle school. The high school, there isn't space. It's offered in the hallways. Uh, our nursing program has a bunch of students that would like to get into it, but we don't have the space to accommodate all of them. We have shared classrooms at the high schools where woodwork, computers, and drafting are in the same classroom, so resources can't be stocked up there and utilized. We have newsrooms in the middle schools, but not at the high schools. In the middle schools, we have small, little classrooms where next to larger classrooms that used to be utilized for support staff, but now the support staff is centralized because it's, it's better for staffing and for resources, and these little spaces aren't used, and then it'd be great if we could add into the big spaces. We have cafeteria with classrooms around it, and those classrooms have to deal with lunchtime crowds. So the building project needs to be definitely addressed for lots of educational reasons. But as far as which way, I need more information to see what else is impacted.
Thank you. This concludes the question and answer portion of the program. Each candidate will now have two minutes to make a closing statement. Mrs. Costelli, would you please begin?
Sure. Uh, first, I want to say thank you to the Wallingford Community Women for hosting us this evening. And every two years, they do this, so that's, uh, thank you very much for that. Uh, also to our two reporters and to our two students, who all asked very, I, I was very surprised by the questions, I have to say. I think they were all very intelligent. And I actually wrote down a couple of them for further educa- educating myself further about them, like the vaping and the, the firm graduation date. I know we've discussed that a little bit in the past, but, um, I'm a little rusty on that one. I want to brush up on that. I also want to thank the folks that are here today in the audience and those that will watch this forum on TV when it, when it becomes available. Uh, your time is valuable, and I appreciate that you've come out to try to learn more about the candidates. Personally, I, uh, have lived in Wallingford since 1979. I raised five beautiful children here, all who still live in Wallingford and are taxpayers. Uh, I started 12 years ago at the, on the Board of Ed in 2008, and I would like to continue to serve both Wallingford community and most especially the students of Wallingford. I know firsthand the level of involvement, the time commitment to be a board member. I serve on a lot of the subcommittees, and I am involved in all nine union negotiations, very time-consuming. I'm very willing to put in those hours. What I bring to the table is my ability to listen to all voices. They're all important. We need to know what everyone's perspective is. We all come from different backgrounds and we have different experiences, and those perspectives will help us make as a board the right decisions. I hope I can always make the right decision, which is always going to be in the best interest of our children. Thank you, and I hope you will all come out and support me and, uh, vote on November 9th, uh, November 5th. Sorry about that. I don't know where November 9th came from. My son's anniversary, November 5th. Thank you.
Autumn Allison, would you please make your closing statement?
Hi. Um, so I want to, you know, also thank everybody who is here tonight. Um, Wallingford Community Women, um, our student panelists, our jour- our journalists who came out to ask us questions, um, and also for all of the work that you do on a continual basis. I am, I came from a family where my grandfather was an immigrant from Germany. Um, and I was, and I tell this story all the time, so I'm sorry for those of you who are listening for a millionth time. Um, he didn't, he, he taught me math from a really young age, with, with a math that is now known as Common Core. So, um, I was, I, he didn't know English well enough or wasn't comfortable well enough for me to learn to read from him. So, um, he, by the time I was about three, started teaching me numbers and letters and things like that. And, um, I had a great benefit because my life has been focused on education the, um, entire time. I continue to educate myself. I also have the benefit of having decided to go to college and then leave college and work in the workforce without a degree, and then go back to school at night and get my degree because I realized that what I wanted to do required one. Um, so I've, I've had a lot of, um, amazing experiences in life. I know a lot about operational plans. Um, this facility study is something that I like, I love because I'm, I'm a data-driven person, um, if you can't tell by my need for information. Um, I am a very passionate person, and ultimately, this is about students. And I want every student to walk away with their, the same perspective that I had on education, which is never, it never stops. It is never going to stop. So I love the opportunity to serve our community.
Thank you. Bruce Conroy, would you please make your statement?
Yes. So let me tell you about myself first. My family moved to Wallingford from New Haven, um, a long time ago now. And when New Haven was not such a nice place back then. Uh, we moved here because my brother was nearly killed. He was attacked while walking down the street. My parents moved here. I came here, I think, in the second or third grade. I couldn't read or write. And, uh, Wallingford made me the man I am today, and I want to give it back now. I see that there's a lot in it. This current Board of Education does wonders with what little they get every year extra. We need more investment in our children, and I'm running because I want that to happen. And I see that we have large construction projects possibly coming up. They are needed, and I believe that because that is exactly what I do. I will make sure that, I can make sure that we don't get, uh, we don't get, trying to be nice here. We don't pick up any bad bids or bad players. I just want to make sure that our children, the next generation, the generations that's going to see, that I'm, that's going to take care of us when we retire, is way more successful, knowledgeable, and then have more advantages than we did.
Thank you. Rajan, would you, Deering, would you please make your statement?
Thank you to the Wallingford Community Women, local news, and the high school students for making tonight's event possible. I started my education in the Wallingford School District in preschool and graduated from Sheehan in 2018 and am now a student at Quinnipiac University. When I was in high school, for two years, I served as Sheehan Student Council President and Student Liaison to the Board of Education, a position requiring monthly presentations to the board. During my time in this role, I routinely coordinated to have leadership of the district come to the schools to hear the student perspective. I also served for one year on a statewide student council, working with the State Board of Education. My experience is not one-sided, as I have served on five district leadership committees, including the STEM Steering Committee, District Health and Wellness Committee, and District Leadership Team. I am an active member of the Wallingford community, which gives me a wide perspective of our needs and values as a town. I am a board member and food pantry leader at the Church of the Nazarene, a board member and grant allocator at the United Way, and a member of the marketing and parade committees of Jubilee 350. If elected, I will work tirelessly to engage all of our stakeholders, our teachers, parents, community members, and most importantly, students, to keep our district united in a vision to find the best use of our budget and our school facilities to prepare all of our students, starting with our youngest learners, for their future. Again, my name is Rajan Deering, and I am truly honored to be running for the Wallingford Board of Education. I invite all members of the community to reach out to me at any time via email at deeringforboard@gmail.com, on my Facebook or Twitter accounts, Deering for Board, or on my cell number, which is 203-208-8534. Thank you.
Patty Purcell, would you please make your statement?
Hi. Um, my background is I have 29 years of educational experience, most of them in Wallingford. Two of my students right here, I'm very proud of them. Um, I've worked at the State Department of Ed. I've worked at Southern Connecticut State University overseeing student teachers. I was on the innovation team for Wallingford, so I bring the perspective of teaching and being in Wallingford. I did want to take a couple seconds of my time to just answer some of the questions. Leah, you asked about pathways. Um, arts and communication is one pathway. Science and health was another. Engineering and technology is another. Business and entrepreneur is one, and government and human services. So those are the pathways we're setting up. I also wanted to talk to Noah's issue about mastery-based learning. When my children went to college, Noah, they needed math remediation. We didn't realize why. And we found out that they got credit in their school for things like having a nice neat notebook and homework and, and behaving in class and participating in class. And it covered up the fact that they didn't have the math content. And so now that we've separated those out, it's helping students and teachers and parents realizing exactly what it is you need when you go to college so that you hopefully won't need remediation like my children did at the time. So that's one of the benefits of mastery-based learning. And I think, other than, I still have time? Woo-hoo, I think I talk fast. Um, I lived in Wallingford for 35 years. All three of my children went through school here. They've all been very successful. And as far as, um, I've been on lots of district community, or committees, state, national. I've done professional development nationally, statewide, and across the district. So I do bring a lot of education background to the, um, to the board. And boppatty.org is my website, and you can contact me through there. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now read Mr. Votto's statement. I'd like to thank the Wallingford Community Women for sponsoring this forum. I'd also like to apologize for not being able to attend this evening due to a long-term previous obligation and to thank them for the opportunity to write this statement. I'm Michael Votto and have been a resident of Wallingford for 47 years. My wife Anne and I have raised three children in Wallingford, two of whom are teachers, and now three of my five grandchildren, who are triplets, are going through the system. I'm an educator who has taught in the North Branford School System for 36 years at the middle school level. Upon retiring from North Branford, I became principal of St. Aidan and St. Brendan School in New Haven for nine and a half years. While I am a retired person at the moment, I'm in the process of seeking a position as an adjunct professor at Gateway Community College. I've been a Board of Education member since 1999, except for one term, and therefore am the longest-serving member of the board. I feel my experience in the classroom and as an administrator allows me to bring to the table many years of experience in the field of education. During my tenure on the board, I've been involved in a myriad of tasks that have given me the experience and expertise needed to be an active and knowledgeable participant. I have served in all leadership positions on the board, including chairperson for two years, vice-chairperson for one term, and secretary for three terms. I have assisted in developing the process of hiring superintendents, actively participate in interviewing all potential new administrators, served on various committees over the last 18 and a half years, such as 11 School Renovation Project, the Wintergreen Magnet School Representative Stipend Committee, Policy Committee, Calendar Committee, Most All Negotiations, and many others. My primary fork, focus in being a Board of Education member has always been students first. I'm a firm believer that all children can experience success with the proper tools, such as excellent teachers, current curriculum, and a safe environment. Additionally, I need to mention that I have always made an effort to be an advocate of children with special needs and their families. As a parent of a special-needs adult, I have firsthand experience with this special population, and they will always have a place in my heart. I'm asking for your support on Election Day so that I may continue to serve the children of Wallingford with my many years as an educator and as a Board of Education member. The profession I chose and started 47 years ago has been most rewarding. I love to be able to use my experience in education in a different role outside of the classroom to be an asset to all of the children of Wallingford. Thank you. Thank you. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th.
Welcome to the 2019 Candidates Forum sponsored by the Wallingford Community Women. I'm Julie Perry, the program moderator. This segment features five of the 12 candidates running for Board of Education. The first part of the program will consist of questions asked of the candidates by members of the local media, including the Record, New Haven Register, Record Journal, and students from Lyman Hall High School and Mark T. Sheehan High School. The second part will allow each candidate to make a closing statement. During the question-and-answer portion of the program, each candidate will have two minutes to respond to a question. Each candidate will have two minutes to make closing remarks. Before beginning the questioning, I'd like to introduce five of the candidates running for the Board of Education. They are from left to right, your left to right. Erin Corso, Republican. Patrick Reynolds, Democrat. Karen Lovick, Republican. Brian Ribard, Democrat. And Tammy Rockio, Republican. Raymond Ross, Republican, is unable to attend this evening. I will read a statement submitted by Mr. Ross during the closing remarks segment. Uh, Lauren Takoras, will you ask your first question to Erin Corso, please?
Yes, thank you, Julie. Hi, Erin.
Hi, Lauren.
Uh, the new electronic devices policy has brought to light the issue of parent contact with students during the school day. Now that parents have the ability to communicate directly with students via cell phones, they're loath to give it up, as we've seen demonstrated at school.
That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to please vote on November 5th. That concludes Part 1 of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to
Things that the board should be looking at and making sure of is that when our students are graduating from high school, they have a specific plan in place. They are either enrolled in a college or university two or four year, they are enlisted in the armed forces, or they are employed in a position that will gain them, not necessarily, well, that will be on the road to a livable wage. I think there's a really big difference between a minimum wage position and a livable wage position. And I think it's really important that the board and the school system are preparing our students for one of those three opportunities. And I think we need to make sure, make sure and assure our students and our families that you will have that opportunity and you will be prepared for one of those three opportunities, if not more than one, because, right, because you can do more than one of those things. You can be enrolled and employed at the same time. So I think it's really important that our students are graduating with that in mind, that they're either enrolled, they're enlisted, or they're employed, and they have an idea of how they're going to make a livable wage moving forward. Thank you.
Leah, please ask your question of Patrick Reynolds.
Hi.
Hi Leah.
How do you believe that board policy can aid in communication between administration, parents, and students, and how it can be improved within the school system?
I mean, we have things already in place, but with that said, you can always, you can always improve. The biggest thing, and you're talking about communications, right? I think if we create the environment where parents feel like welcome, you know, it's a community, that I think parents, because there might be some parents, for whatever reason, might be reluctant to reach out, you know, to communicate, you know, to let's say the superintendent or central office. I think if we strive to create, and I know we do outreach, you know, in the community, to make people feel more comfortable. With technology, I mean, again, there's, you know, you can send emails, you can send, you know, texts, things like that. But I still get back to the whole thing, it's making people feel comfortable sitting at the same table.
Luther, please ask your question of Karen Lavak.
Karen, over your years on the board, you've always been known as a strong advocate for special needs kids. What can the district do better to serve that important population while keeping in mind that there are certain state mandates that you have to navigate around?
Well, myself having a child with developmental disabilities, I'm well aware of how these things can impact students. So first of all, one of the most important things, and I think that we are doing now, is we have a brand new special education director. And we are running programs for the special education PTAC that is helping parents to advocate for their children's needs, to make sure that they partner with the school district, to make sure that the school district understands what their understanding is of what their child's functioning level is, and for the professionals to be around the table and to address those needs, whether it's occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech and language pathology, special education, all of those things. That's how we can do that, and make sure that we adhere to the individualized education plan that is developed, because that's federal law, and we have to abide by that. So those are the things that we need to do. We need to provide the appropriate public education in the least restrictive environment. And we have a number of programs in the district that do do that for a number of children with differing needs. So I think we do a very good job of that, and we want to make sure we continue that by educating parents and really welcoming them in with what their perspective is on their child, and working as a team, the school district and the parents as a team, to do what's best for that particular child.
Lauren, please ask your question of Brian Rivard.
Hi Brian.
Hi Lauren.
What should the Board of Ed's budget priorities be going into 2021, given the cuts in ECS funding?
Yeah, it's interesting, the finances of a school district, especially in Connecticut, where they're somewhat dependent upon, you know, state budget calculations and the Formula Eight payback, which is, I think, for folks who don't know the numbers you're referring to. And every couple of years, you hear about, you know, dramatic cuts. One thing I would have to say is, the Board of Ed, over the past number of years here, has done well in terms of protecting what they can in the budget. For me, the priority is always going to be students first. I know that sounds a little bit cliche, but when I think of that, I think of touch points that are directly interfacing with the students on a day-to-day basis. Obviously, teachers, people talk about student-to-teacher ratio as kind of a, you know, this number of, something that's really important. What I think of that is, how many staff are able to touch those students on a daily basis and help them in that specific need, whether it be a teacher, whether it be a special education professional, whether it be someone like that. So I kind of group those together, and I would try to protect those touch points first. And then, of course, sometimes you may be in a situation where you have to make difficult cuts, and I would be prepared to do that. I manage a, you know, budget where I work at Pratt Whitney, that's similar in scope and size to the budget of the Board of Ed managers here, so I think I'd be prepared to make those tough decisions. I wouldn't take any of those decisions lightly, because, you know, in a time where towns are facing, you know, lean financial situations, everything you touch, something's gonna hurt. And so anyway, students first, protect those touch points, and then you'd have to take everything else on a case-by-case, unfortunately. And those are difficult discussions to have, but I'd be prepared to have them.
Ryan, please ask your question of Tammy Raccio.
Hi Brian.
Hi. Should standardized testing be the district's guide in education policy and initiatives?
I do not support teaching to a test, and having a curriculum that is taught just so that the district achieves high test scores. I actually have a child who was out of district at a magnet school for two years, early in his education, and that school basically shut down before the S-VACs came out, and they just did practice exams. There was no new learning, there was no new curriculum. It was just, let's do the best we can, and cramming in, because they didn't even have a one-to-one ratio. So they only had a certain period of time that the students actually had access to the technology. And they did a lot of teaching to the test to try and make sure test scores were where they wanted them to be. I think a better approach and a more holistic approach for students in the long term is to teach a good curriculum. Now, if there's reasons that students are not able to perform well on a test, those are things that we should also look at, if they need to have accommodations, whether it's extra test time or something like that. But teaching to a test and having curriculum just based to make sure that, whether it's an S-VAC score, or an SAT score, I'm not in favor of that, because long-term, that won't help our students when they go on to college or to other career paths.
Leah, please ask your question of Erin Corso.
Hi.
Hi Leah.
Recently, mental health has been a major concern among middle and high school students. So what do you think of the resources currently available in our schools, and what do you believe can be done to improve upon these foundations?
So I agree that mental health is something that our entire nation is looking at and should be looking at. Our students and our adults, students and adults, are faced with issues today that we would never have dreamed of. I can remember thinking back when I first started teaching, 18 years ago, and my first professional development dealt with reading strategies in the classroom. Fast forward ahead 15 years, and I'm in professional development that deals with Alice training, mental health, trauma-based instruction, trauma-informed instruction, and things like that. So our times have changed, and they've changed pretty quickly. In terms of the services that we have in place, we hired, this past school year, we hired new psychologists and social workers, so that every single elementary school is equipped with a psychologist and a social worker. Our support services at the middle and high school are also utilized on a daily basis between school counselors, which we don't have at the elementary level. We now have school counselors that are introduced in the middle and high school level. And we've also started to contract a little bit with some outside agencies that are coming in and offering programs for our younger students. So I think that it's something that the board is very aware of. Our town is very aware of. We work very closely with Craig Turner, and I'm proud of the work that we've done and the support that we've given in those areas. Thank you.
Luther, please ask your question of Patrick Reynolds.
Patrick, does the district do enough in terms of encouraging young people who may not be comfortable with the idea of going to college, or who may, whose skills may be better suited for some kind of vocation and going into that particular training? Does the district do enough to encourage, to seek out those students and to help them find their way into vocational education?
I think we've, we've had a good start, but there are, we need to expand our program. I've been advocating now for a number of months is to create a pathway for energy management. Energy management is going to be one of the biggest fields probably over the next two, three, four decades, just like I'm kind of advocating for energy efficiency in our facility study. The beauty part about energy management is that it has various, I guess, careers associated with it. If you're in hands-on, you can be a fabricator, you can install, you know, energy-efficient systems. If you like to design, well, you can design them. But, you know, we do have the manufacturing, we have the nursing, I want to include energy management. And again, yeah, the more, the more we expand, the better off. The more, let's put it this way, the more options our students have, you know, especially when we start, when we start to partner up, which is what I also want to do, with local colleges, community colleges, you know, they start taking courses there, whether they're online or they have to go on campus. But yeah, I agree with 100% that, you know, like I said, it's a good start, we just need to keep moving forward.
Lauren, please ask your question of Karen Lavak.
Hi Karen.
Hi.
Earlier this year, the school board voted to dissolve a partnership with Wintergreen Magnet School. Instead of applying through the school district, parents now apply through the Magnet School Parent Choice Program. What's your opinion on regional magnet schools? Do they work, and should Wallingford be more proactive in identifying students for placement in magnet school programs?
Well, regional magnet schools do work. It depends on what you're looking for, for your student. For example, ACES runs a program, that's the Educational Center for the Arts, for those that are gifted and talented in the visual and performing arts. And that works quite well for our students. They spend some time in the district doing their core classes, and then they go to ACES for their visual and performing arts portion of their education. So I think they do work very well. With regard to the dissolution of the WHMS Agreement, that came about for a couple of reasons. Some folks pulled out of it, some participants, Hamden and what have you, pulled out of that. And the curriculum has changed a great deal over the years at the Wintergreen, inter-district magnet school. It used to be a longer school year, a longer school day, a different curriculum. Now it's more centered around the visual and performing arts, and that's going to be a feeder school in some aspects for the Educational Center for the Arts. So I do think magnet schools have their place in educating students. It's a matter of what your student is interested in learning and what meets their personalized learning needs.
Thank you. Thanks. Ryan, please ask your question of Brian Rivard.
Hi Mr. Rivard.
Hey Ryan.
How does mastery-based learning help students like myself be prepared for college experience?
Yeah, I'm gonna kind of start with a personal story. I had the benefit of going to an Ivy League university. I was actually the first in my regional town that did it in many, many years. Now, one challenge I had when I got there was, I didn't, I don't feel like I had properly prepared myself and been prepared for the habits of work piece, which we've kind of separated out as part of mastery-based learning. And in fact, it got bad enough that I was on what they called academic probation my first semester. Little-known fact that I just announced to everybody here. But I almost got, you know, sent home, and that letter came back to my mom. And I think, you know, the one element of mastery-based learning, if you look at the new report cards that kids get, and this is kind of, this is tangible, right? You've got habits of work broken out, and then you have the concept understanding by area. And if you can, if our teachers are capable, which they are, of successfully separating those things, I think it can help parents and the students themselves understand what they need to focus on. Absent maybe doing any extra assignment just to get through and understand the concept. The other thing it does allow you, because you've done that, is to try to, you know, allow students to move forward and back at their own personalized pace. And not everyone is going to get the same subject as quickly as the others. And the more flexible we can be there for each student's needs, I think the best, the better. I think we always can do a better job of explaining to people what this means, but those are a couple of the reasons why I think it, if we do it properly and carefully and communicate, then we should continue on that path. It'll help students in the long run.
Leah, please ask your question of Tammy Raccio.
Hi.
Hi Leah.
With the latest push towards STEM fields in curriculum and course loads and graduation requirements in the high schools, what do you think the board can do to continue their support of other fields such as the arts or social sciences?
I think that's a great question. There's a lot of different opportunities that are out there for individualized instruction. And I think the board, we will be looking at, as the state revised their requirements for graduation, and we've adopted that policy, revising our policy. Now we need to go back and we need to look at the regulation that goes with that. So in the upcoming months, that's something that the board will be looking at. One of the things that that will give us the opportunity to do is to really take a hard look at how students achieve their credits. Does it always have to be in seat time, or are there other ways that students can receive credits? Could it be going to a community college, that was already mentioned earlier this evening? Could it be online programming? Could it be doing some type of meaningful internship? And all of these different areas could be in arts and humanities, as well as some of the STEM areas. I think the arts and humanities, as Mrs. Lavak mentioned, with the ECA program, there are students in our community that absolutely excel with that area. And I also think that with our new special education director, that's one of the areas that, as we identify students who are gifted and talented in that area, that's another opportunity for us to bring programming to those students. So I'm very much looking forward to expanding that area as we move into the next term.
Luther, please ask your question of Erin Corso.
Is the current facilities plan that the board is looking at, is it being driven more by the age of the schools or the programming needs? And the second part of my question is, do you think that there are any schools that are beyond renovational capability, practically speaking?
So the first part of that question, what's the driving factor? I think, I think it's both. Because when we look at making changes to our facilities, because of the age, and because of what needs to be done, if we're looking to make those changes, we don't want to make the changes and then be stuck with the same, without being able to evolve our curriculum and move it forward. So I think that that's both. We are constantly evolving and constantly changing. Dr. Menzel works really hard with the Department of Labor, and our centralized CTE department does as well, to figure out what our labor force needs are moving forward, and we're putting programming in place to meet those needs. So there are some changes that need to happen for those, for that programming as well. In terms of facilities that are so, so far beyond, I think there's certainly places that need, like, I mean, she-in-track needs to be redone, certainly. But this next level, we have been talking about a second-level facility study that will really dive into this system absolutely, this system is going to go in the next five years, or this, this field needs redoing right now, whatever it may be. The second-level study is going to tell us a little bit more about that. We've already heard, it's, it would be almost next to impossible to put centralized air conditioning at the middle schools, just because of the structure of, and when they were built. But I'm looking forward to the results of another study to really dive into those issues. Thank you.
Lauren, please ask your question of Patrick Reynolds.
Hi Lauren.
Given the fiscal challenges the town could face in the future, do you think the Board of Ed should continue to give wage increases to unions in future negotiations? And do you think the town will reach a breaking point where it has to say no to wage increases?
Well, coming from a retired teacher, as far as raise, and also being a union vice president negotiating for raises, you have, I believe that you have to be competitive. To keep or to attract new teachers, to keep teachers here, you have to be competitive. And I've been a firm believer, and I know there's people out there that'll disagree, you know, with the amount of time a teacher puts in, you know, and they always hear summers off and this and that. No, the extra time at night on the weekends, they should be compensated. Again, then also looking at the town, you know, financial situation. But see, there's also, and you can talk to the council people tomorrow, you attract new businesses, you increase the grant list, and you increase the revenue, and then you can afford to pay them. Will we ever get to that point? I couldn't tell. I couldn't make that prediction if we get to that breaking point. You know, the economy could take a dive, and people get laid off. Again, I've been involved in renegotiating contracts as, you know, as a vice president of the union, where we took a pay cut. I'm not saying that, but we had to take a pay cut, just in New Britain, just to balance things out. One thing, though, and I'll keep making my pitch, that's why I'm looking also towards energy efficiency. I have read reports that some districts in the country have saved 30, 40% in energy costs. So that's one, you know, one thing to look at. But I'd say overall, again, we have to compensate our teachers. They do a heck of a job, and they need to have a decent wage.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ryan, please ask your question of Karen Lavak.
Hi.
Hi.
Which of the three options from the facility study do you support, and why?
Again, we're waiting for information from the state regarding reimbursement costs for each of those, well, at least two of the options. So that information is key for me to have before I make a decision as to which of the three we would, I would support. However, again, this was a superficial look at what might need to be done to the schools. And we need to approach the town council and look to see if there's additional funding to look at a deeper study of the concerns that we have with the schools. This was just a high-level look at what might be needed and what might be the costs. All of these were estimates. Those things can change. It could be more costly than anticipated, and that's why we need that second study to really look more specifically into the more granular information that's necessary to make a decision. I hate to be cagey about this, but I really need to have that additional information before I could make an informed decision.
Leah, please ask your question of Brian Rivard.
Hi.
Hi Leah.
Is there a particular issue that motivates you to serve as a board member, and what is it and why?
There are several. One, obviously, I have twin daughters who are in fourth grade at Parker Farms right now. I want to see the school strong for them. I want to see the school strong for all of the students that are enrolled right now. One of the issues, a lot of folks, when I go around, they kind of call me the STEM guy, or the guy who understands STEM. I would actually say, and the reason for that is, I'm an aerospace engineer. I have a deep knowledge of the skills required for students going into a digital workplace, as well as into complex fields. So I think I do bring that. I also think I bring a unique perspective because of that. But I would say that's not all of me either. I would say that the arts is critical. Some of the best engineers I've ever known are folks who can, who had, you know, played instruments, continue to do so, like, such as myself, as well as deal with the arts. So I'm reflecting on the question you asked of the panel earlier, which was, hey, how do we balance those things in a curriculum? I think that unique perspective that I have would really balance out the board as we look forward to all of these potential changes. We need to think, you know, maybe two and three steps ahead as to what are those critical fields of the future. And let's be honest, towns don't get to invest a lot of money in new schools very often. And typically, when it's done, it's done that one time for the next 20, 30, maybe 40 years, if we look at our own schools. So when we do that, we should, we should do it carefully, methodically, and stepwise, so we're thinking one, two, three steps down the road in terms of career opportunities of those next 30 years. I think working internationally and dealing with international businesses, as well as my engineering leadership in terms of program management at Pratt Whitney, will uniquely help the board in defining those steps as we go forward and creating the future vision of the schools for Wallingford.
Luther, please ask your question of Tammy Raccio.
Tammy, in the society where adults get on social media and call each other names and act aggressively, how effective a job is the school district doing in teaching the children of Wallingford that it's important to be compassionate and fighting, you know, efforts, efforts, bullying problems in the school system?
That's a great question. And first of all, I want to start with, that teaching starts at home. So that teaching needs to start with parents and guardians modeling the behavior that we want to see in our children. I'm also a very fortunate mom with a freshman at UConn that thinks social media is dumb. So he's in a minority, and I love it that way. And I also have an 11-year-old that the other day asked me, what is the purpose of Facebook? So I'm in a lucky place right now. I hope it stays that way. I think with social media, there is a balance. Some of the things that happen on social media are very emotionally charged, they're at the moment, and it's with adults as well as with students. And it really goes back to making sure that adults have an avenue to communicate with somebody, be it at central office, or the schools, or have access to a teacher if there's an issue, so that the teacher or the administrator really knows what's happening firsthand. That's really important, because the teacher or the administrator is going to be the person that will be able to help the child in school if they are being bullied. That's something that they can get involved in right away. Going out onto social media, or tweeting, or putting it on Facebook, or anything like that, that isn't going to help the student right away. And the adults also have to understand, too, that that's their digital footprint. And at some point, sometime, their child is going to read that. So I think there's a balance. I think that parents and guardians need to be very aware that they should be modeling the behavior. But I do think that the school system does have a responsibility to ensure that there's open communications, that parents and guardians can go to them to address the issues, and not have an emotional response on something like a Facebook.
Thank you. That concludes the question-and-answer portion of the program. Each candidate will now have two minutes to make a closing statement. Erin Corso?
So many of you may know already. If not, I'm a lifelong Wallingford resident, and I love our town. I love all the things that our town has to offer our residents. I think we're in a great place financially, and I think our school system is heading in the right direction. I think we have a lot of really great programs in place for our students, and I'm proud of the work that we've been doing. I have four kids in public school right now. I'm a product of public schools. When it was time, when I was in middle school, it was time to choose a high school, my older brothers, they went out to Xavier. They went to private school, they went out to Xavier, and I begged and pleaded, and I got my way to Lyman Hall. And I am forever thankful for that. I think public school served me very well. And I want to ensure that public school serves our students in town very well also. I love education. I think it's transformative. I think it's life-changing, and it's an investment that we can make in our students and our young people. that we can make in our students and our young people. It's the best investment that we can make in them. I'm also fiscally conservative, and I believe in efficiency, and running our district with the most efficiency and fiscal responsibility as possible. So if you'd like any more information, I am on, I am on Facebook. You can find me at Erin Corso for Board of Education. My email address, of course, is on the website. I'm also a public school, I'm the lead counselor at Ansonia High School. So I, I live and breathe education, and you can contact me with any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick Reynolds?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to thank the Wallingford Community Women, our panel, Lauren, I'll even thank Luther, Leah, and Ryan. Just to give you a b- a brief bio, a lifelong resident of Wallingford, married to my beautiful wife, Deb, who's in the audience, forty-six years. Three great, fantastic children who are actually living in Wallingford. And I have five unbelievable grandchildren, three of them are in the school district. So I do have like, you know, vested interest, you know, as far as our, you know, the success of our schools. As far as experience, this is my fourth term on the Board of Ed. I taught high school science for over twenty years, and I actually taught in the suburbs and also in an urban area. I am still currently an adjunct professor of science, been doing that for well over thirty years. So I think I've got something to offer the, you know, the Board of Ed, my experience in, in education. Partly one of the biggest questions that, or the first question a lot of people ask, you know, why, why are you running? And I, I mean, this is, you know, the way I was brought up. I was brought up, my father used to always say, count your blessings. Well, part of your blessings i- is a community, a successful community. And what makes a community successful are the people in the community helping out. My father was a police officer for decades. He gave to the community. My mother was an activist, my sister was an activist. I got into education. It was my, it sounds kind of corny, but my calling. You know, again, I'm still in education, but I really feel that I've got something to offer to the Board of Ed, maybe a different way of looking at things. And, you know, please, you know, if you can remember, what was it, Kathy? November 5th is election day, and I do, I would appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Lavec?
Yes. I wish to thank the Wallingford Community Women and the panel of students and reporters for the opportunity to address our community. We are facing challenging financial times, and we need to continue to provide a quality education for each student in a safe environment while maintaining fiscal responsibility. We can do this by continuing to apply for grants. We received over six hundred thousand dollars in grants this past year. Continuing to employ lean strategies, and to be very thankful for our generous community and business partners, with donations in excess of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars realized this past year. An enhanced, safe learning environment has been addressed by partnering with the police and fire departments, and by implementing Silox, a system that provides real-time information to first responders, and securely, which provides monitoring for our electronic devices in schools. We need to invest in technology, revise our curriculum, and provide experiential learning opportunities, such as our advanced manufacturing program and CNA program, to provide our students with the tools that they need to be successful in college, career, and life. Communication, cooperation, collaboration are key elements for parents, students, teachers, administrators, and the community to continue to ensure that educational excellence continues. It has been a privilege to serve on the Board of Education for fifteen years. I have served as the board chair, vice chair, and currently serve as the operations committee chair, and the delegate to the ACES governing board. I have called Wallingford home for the past thirty-nine years. All of my children have been educated through the Wallingford school system, each received an excellent education. It is very important that we continue to provide our students with a proper, good education, while maintaining fiscal responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Rivard?
Okay, I'm Brian Rivard. I guess a few things about me. I'm passionately, passionate about and committed to Wallingford's future. My wife and I, Anne-Marie, married fourteen years. We've really grown to love this town. We're both transplants to the area, brings another kind of unique, fresh perspective. She's from Buffalo, New York, and I'm from north-central Massachusetts. I was raised by a lifelong preschool teacher who did a long stint with Head Start preschool programs. That's where I kind of have gained my, both passion for learning, but also an understanding that strong public schools really do provide upward pathways to success for all students when they're, when they're properly administered, and when you've, you've got good teachers in place. I'm heavily active in the community. Currently, I serve as the, the town system-wide parent-teacher advisory council chairperson. You heard a number of references to that by the panel up here. I was recently re-elected as the, the PTAC chairperson. I'm a, one of the initial members of the STEM Town Steering Committee, which is focused on trying to identify, I'll say, eliminate the stigma of, of technical careers for both folks in manufacturing, but also highlight the STEM opportunities and careers that exist in the future. I'm a Girl Scout leader in town. I had twin daughters, I was an Eagle Scout myself, so when I had an opportunity to be a leader, I, they wanted to do Girl Scouts, and Anne-Marie said, well, you should be a leader, so I did it. I have a unique professional experience. I alluded to it earlier, fifteen years of Pratt Whitney. I've worked my way up from, you know, manufacturing. I was an engineer when I started, but also went onto the shop floor. I've seen all, I'm currently a program director of an entire engine program, and I've seen all of the different skill sets that might be required for our students in all different areas of, of professional life. I believe in four kind of key things I would want to focus on. Strategic planning, to assure that we're nimble. The people in the district. Instruction and financial, I mentioned earlier that I'd be able to make difficult financial decisions if required. Please vote for me, Brian Rivard.
Okay, thank you. Tammy Rocio?
Thank you. Excuse me. One thing that's different about me sitting up here this year is that last time there were, I was here, I had two students in the school system. Now I can proudly say that I am the mom of a graduate of the school system, and one who still remains in. That has also afforded me the opportunity to fully get the picture of what a Wallingford public school's education is. As I see him at UConn, I see how well-prepared he was. And I know that Wallingford Schools is preparing our students for bright futures if they want to go the path of college afterwards. In the past two years, I've been able to take on different initiatives that can help prepare families as well as students. Prior to being on the board, I was assistant wide PTAC chair for five years, and I do have a passion for making sure that families are also included, and feel that they have opportunities to be engaged with their students' educational experience in Wallingford. I've taken the Next Steps Parent Advocacy class, as well as sitting on different State Department of Education task forces. And one of the things that I've really been able to reflect on is not every family is in the same position to be actively engaged. And the opportunity of being a board member allows me not only to give back, but it helps families who may not be able to be engaged. Some families work two jobs, they can't make it to meetings in the evenings. That's not a reflection that they're not interested or that they don't care, it's just that they are not able to do that. Those of us who can do, and those of us who can help others, that's also our responsibility to do that. And I'm proud to say that my children in the school system have also been able to take on that responsibility and recognize that as students. So please vote on November 5th, and thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thank you. I will now read the statement from Raymond Ross. "Good evening. I want to apologize for not being able to be part of this evening's forum. Unfortunately, I have a personal obligation which, which makes it impossible, impossible for me to join you. Tonight, I ask for your support so that I can continue to serve both you and Wallingford's children as a member of the Board of Education. Over the past two years, I have worked tirelessly to improve both the level of education and the quality of the learning environment afforded Wallingford students. I have found it very gratifying to have earned the trust, support, and confidence of parents, faculty, and students, and I hope to continue to act as an advocate for them going forward. I remain fully committed to ensuring that our school system has the resources necessary to provide our kids with a safe, supportive, and well-functioning learning environment. I ask for your permission to continue to serve as a member of the Board of Education for the next two years. Respectfully yours, Ray Ross."
So thank you. This concludes part two of the 2019 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to vote on November 5th.